Good morning, guys, from Yonkers for us. Today, we hear Lieutenant Dean. I'm not gonna attempt to say his last name, because I always mess it up, so I'm gonna call Lieutenant Dean.
Sorry, no, not Lieutenant Dean.
Well, to me, you're Lieutenant. That's how I met you, you are Lieutenant Dean. So, Lieutenant, thank you for taking the time, thank you for sitting with us, and thank you for speaking with the people here.
Of course, thank you for having me.
You've been in Yonkers for many years. You did what? How many years you did in this department?
I did twenty, just a little over twenty years now.
A little bit over twenty years, so you know the community well. Do you know what we need? Do you know what we don't need? You know the priorities that should be addressed. So let's start this interview by telling the people of Yonkers why you are here.
Thanks, Ben. I guess the simple answer to that is I like helping. I enjoy helping people. I like taking care of our neighborhoods. I like taking care of our communities. And I think I'd be good at the job. I have a background in the public service. In the last couple of years, I worked in the trade work and worked for city government. So I think with that experience and that level of knowledge, how to work with the city, being familiar with all the communities and community-based organizations, all the different areas, wards, districts of the city, paired with the desire to want to continue working for the public service and to continue to help people. I think it's a good fit. I think it's a good match. So I know I'm a public officer before. This is my first time doing anything like this. So give a shout, or harden, try to be the best I can.
Actually, I was surprised when I found out that you were running for a city council.
When I did.
I was surprised. But look, before we go further, I want to apologize. If you see me typing at the same time as I'm typing, I don't want you to think that I'm not paying attention. But you know, it is a public relations department. It's the problem that sometimes we have to multitask.
No, no, of course, you do what you have to do. I'll try to answer you as thoroughly as possible. I enjoy this because usually when I speak, there is a PCL taken between us, not as an analogy.
No, that's a plus. That's a plus. Well, I've been working with Lieutenant for many years. He was the police communication director. I think I knew you when you were on the streets, correct?
I think the first time we met, actually, I was working in the fourth precinct. And you had, I don't know if you had just started, but we first started running into each other in the middle of the night. And I'm like, who is this guy showing up? It was three o'clock in the morning. And that was our first interactions. And always positive interactions. Every now and then, sometimes we had a disagreement, but that's normal, that comes with the job.
Yeah, that's normal. Lieutenant, you walk around the streets again. You talk to people. You listen to them in order to address what the priorities of the people are. What do they tell you are the priority? The things that they want you to address first? I know there's many things, but there's certain things, like in our lives, priority, this must be first, second, third. What is priority for the city of Yonkers?
Yeah, no, great question. So I think, without a doubt, it's quality of life is number one.
Right.
And also number one is public safety. And also number one is economic issues and financial considerations. I think the issues that affect people the most are the same issues that affect you at home and affect me at home, right? It's where you live, it's how you live, it's the things that are affecting you in your neighborhoods and your communities. So I think the main priorities are to create those conditions that allow a city to thrive, to create those conditions that improve our quality of life, to create those conditions that make people want to come to the city of Yonkers, live here, raise a family here, and really focus on our neighborhoods and our communities, because that's where you live, that's where your kids grow up, that's where you go home every night. And we really need to focus on prioritizing that, our neighborhoods, our communities, and giving them the quality of life and the services that they need to thrive. You know, may I just finish the petition season last week? And we were collecting lots of signatures. And I'm proud to report that we were able to double the amount of signatures required in collecting the documents and asking signatures with the help of the Republican Party and the conservative party, and the Democratic Party. But one of the best things about going out and collecting petitions was I had a real opportunity to go out and to meet a lot of the residents in their homes, meet a lot of the residents in their neighborhoods, and really talk to them one-on-one about the issues that are affecting them in their neighborhoods. And once again, depending on where you go throughout the city, whether it's inside or outside, there's different issues that affect different people in Yonkers. Whether we're talking about flooding of infrastructure projects or public safety, the quality of life in the area, development, waterfront engine, overbuying, through a... There's different issues affecting people. They're really, the core issue is always coming out the same, right? How do we make where we live better? And as long as the focus is there, as long as the focus remains on the neighborhoods, remains on the communities, then I think city government is sort of the right question.
Now, Lieutenant, there is people that, yes, they run and they almost fix issues. They tell us that they understand the issues. But you are a little bit on the other side. You understand the issues, you just remain there, especially when it talks about quality of life. Even that happens on streets. Look, honestly speaking, many of us don't understand complexities of budgets. How much does the school bill on gas? How much does MGM give to the school? Most people don't understand. But they understand crime. They understand if this is affecting my neighborhood, if this is not garbage picked up. Are those issues being addressed? Is problem of schools with youth being addressed? You're being there on both sides. So you have a different perspective of what the problem is and what needs to be done to solve those problems. Do you want to talk about a little bit about that?
Absolutely, and thank you. So first, let me just say right off the bat, having been to a lot of police departments and having spoken with a lot of the law enforcement executives, and I'm not saying this because of the work there or because I'm tired there, I can say without a doubt that Yonkers Police Department is by far one of the finest police departments in the city. One of the most law enforcement progressive police departments when it comes to operations, policy procedures, technology, and the way they operate. Yonkers PD is really miles ahead of a lot of other agencies. And a lot of that is due to leadership over the administration and the leadership in the city. They're doing all the part that they deserve. Public safety is very complicated. And it's very complicated because there are a lot of elements and variables that affect us in public safety. Primarily on the state level with the way the laws are passed by legislature and how appeal laws adjust or tweak and how the legal procedure laws, decisions adjust or tweak, and how cases are adjudicated. So ultimately, the community decides how you run the streets. Right? The community decides whether you elect officials and the people that you don't court and through the action that they take at the ballot box and communicate with their elected officials. They ultimately determine how you run the streets. Yonkers as a city is a fair and safe city. We can prove that statistically. We can prove that with the data. Compared in the state of New York, as far as the city or agencies go, it is by far the safest city in the country and the safest city in the state. But if you're the victim of crime, or you're in a car broken into, or if you see somebody driving a scooter and they're walking down the street, it's still complex. You still feel that there's a potential degree of something going wrong. How to fix that, right? And the way you fix that is you make sure that the police department has the resources to do their job. You make sure that you give them the ability to do their job and you make sure they work in the use of the criminal justice system. And it's that third piece where we sometimes run through little complications on the state level. And we can get into the bail reform, the discovery, and rates of age, and a lot of these other issues that affect us, especially that affects juvenile crime. But the long story of it is that in the last couple of years, the state legislature made some changes, passing laws that every police department in the state of New York has to follow that affects the way consequences are applied after the law goes. And I believe we need to talk about this sometimes, right? So even if something is simple, before we arrested somebody for shoplifting, there was a good possibility that they would spend the day to be fined before they were released. Now, they might go multiple arrests before they get released, right? With rates of age, before you had juvenile stuff who were seventeen, sometimes being convicted as adults for catching a certain crimes. Now that stuff's changed, right? So a lot of those issues, the local police department will do the best they can to work with the rules that the state government sets for them. But they can't go around those rules, right? You have to work within the frame that's being set for you by state government. Having said that, overall, the best way to address public safety and quality of life is you get a lot of politicians, everybody, officials that talk about quality of life. But quality of life is just not something that just appears out of nowhere. People have to work for the local service, whether it's police, fire, DPW, or emergency services, whatever it is, somebody has to actually go out and provide quality of life. And the best way you do it is by making sure that your agencies have the resource, they have the leadership, and you're giving them the ability to do their job. And here in the city of Yonkers, we do all of that. We do it very well. I just do wish sometimes, certainly with politics, that the state government, especially the Democrat leadership in the state government, is more cooperative with listening to the law enforcement community and listening to the public safety community and making sure that they're engaged in conversations, right? Because I think that's kind of what happened with the discovery law changes last time, was that nobody asked the DA's office and nobody asked the police, what do you think about this? They just mitigated the changes. And I think one of the long lasting effects of that, and I'm not 100% believe this is a change, but I believe New York was one of the only states in the Union that didn't look at dangerousness as a component of keeping somebody confined or confined. It's just looked strictly at their ability to retire at court. But at someone's degree of are they rather dangerous in the community, a judge is not allowed to look at that. And I don't know if that's been changed or somebody have to go back and really heal themselves. But that would be an example where you would expect the state to work with police, to work with the DA's and say, hey, how do you guys feel about this? Will they pass this law?
I'm strongly, but I have interviewed a couple of commissioners when you were in the police department. And I always say, and you know, I told you that our police department are not perfect. Very close to it. And there is always room for improvement. But I feel that Yonkers Police Department is an example to how many other police departments should learn this.
I agree with you 100%.
We are pretty good.
We are. We are very good. And I'm not just saying that because I'm working for office in the city of Yonkers to work there. I hear that from other police departments and other agencies and other law enforcement executives. And you'll also overhear the administration talk about it too. But it's like you'll get other police agencies saying, hey, what are you guys doing there? That's different, that's special, right? And getting back to our statement before, it's taking all those elements that make the organization successful and saying, here you go. Here are the tools, here are the resources, whether it's the city council, whether it's the mayor's office, whether it's leadership within the police department, take care of our residents, do a good job. Here are the resources to do.
But that's not a match for Yonkers. Yonkers also had a few problems with the police department.
Yes.
In the S. It existed. So what is the match? What change? Is the new police officers, the new mentality, change in leadership, what changed?
I think it's a little bit of everything. So as you know, I'm sure as a lot of the listeners know, about, I would say it's over 10 years ago now, the Department of Justice had come in through a technical letter. They found no civil rights violations, but they came and reviewed the department and they made up a list of like 150 different recommendations that the police department followed. Some of them were simplest, type of patches where they were named tags. Some of them were a lot more complicated and had to do with investigating use of force and investigating civilian crimes, right? So the Department of Justice came in and retained and approved 150 recommendations. The police department proudly met, I believe, 99% or 95% of the technical arguments to the point where the Department of Justice was satisfied and they just recently left. I think the commission had been announced for too long ago. So a lot of those improvements, a lot of those recommendations yielded improvements that I think ultimately in the long run did help make a difference, right? That's one. Two, I think the quality, qualities of our work, the people who are doing law for, the yellow people today are different. I think just the generation in the world today is a different generation. They're more knowledge-seeking, they're more detail-oriented. They're, and I think a lot of it has to do with the way they grow up using technology. So they see the world a little bit differently than perhaps you and I see, right? So the type of police officers that are getting hired all over, there's a generational difference. There's a difference in leadership and administration. I don't think there's any one element. I think ultimately what happens is you give an agency like the police department the tools and the resources and the leadership, the vision to execute and to use those tools and resources. And I think over time, you see improvements like that. And you know, I worked for three different, yeah, I worked for multiple commissioners over the years, but in my tenure, in the last couple of years, I worked with three different commissioners and they're all working in our respects. And you have leadership like that pushing your agency to do better and to make progress. And constantly we put policies, supervision operations, that's how you grow. And you also work for your state's department.
That's me, definitely. Definitely. Lieutenant, one of the reasons people vote for A, B, or C person sometimes is not based on politics. There's a lot of people who don't understand politics. They vote for this person, that person, or the other person based on, does that person understands my problems? Can that person relates to my problems? Will that person work to fix the problem that I have? Connect with the people. Tell them why you are the person for that job.
Yeah, no, I mean, thank you, Ben. I mean, listen, there's a lot of people running for city council president, right? I think this is the most people we've had running on the old side for a very long time. So I root block and I would ask the people and your listeners and the voters in general to vote for something, to elect for somebody who they think would be the best person for the job, right? And not necessarily just whether it's a certain political line or a certain political philosophy. But who's gonna help, who's gonna help who to sit for? Who's going to help set the conditions for the city to thrive? I honestly feel that way about myself. I feel it very strongly about myself that I can do that because of my familiarity working in all quarters of the city, right? Because I'm running as a Republican conservative, having somebody that can offer the shut-in balance and be on the other side of the unified democratic party. I think, having worked with all the community-based organizations, having gone into all different neighborhoods for a very long time, spending a lot of time very recently getting to see a lot of people, know a lot of people, talking to their problems. I think I have a good base experience. I think I have a good warehouse of knowledge. I think, I would like to think that I have the character and morals and principles to be a good, great, effective city council president and help the city create those conditions for the city to thrive. And most importantly too, is I know a lot of people, I mean, it's a lot of people in the city, and I really wasn't sure, but a lot of people have known me. I also want to make myself available to people too. And whether it's doing interviews at this and meeting across the place or out in the outdoors. I've also made my cell phone and my UNI address public. People can call me, just reach out to me if they want. If I answer, they text me and make myself available. Because I don't expect everyone just to get to know me and follow any of your peers. I would like to speak to people and get to know people as much as possible as well. And talk to them, hear more operations, or that type of thing.
Well, Lieutenant, we cannot go much longer without me giving a big shout-out to Dos Marias 200 New Main Street in Yonkers. This is the house of the best Mexican food. If you want home food, Mexican food, this is the place to come. If you want to mix a meal, make new friends, this is the place to come. If you love tacos, this is the place to come. They have, not free, oh, not free. They have taco Tuesdays. First and foremost, for you. That's it. Nothing is better than taco Tuesday. Unless we have Wednesday tacos. But so far, it's only Tuesday tacos. So come on down. All of us talk about supporting our local businesses, but just talking about supporting does not add to support. We have to come to those people, spend our money there, enjoy it, and have a good time. So Tuesday, if you're looking for a good Mexican food, Dos Marias 200 New Main Street is the place for you. Now, Lieutenant Realma, and I have a couple of questions, statements here, one is from Mr. Philip Armstrong. What's next, Philip Armstrong?
I don't know, maybe he has.
You will get to know him Friday night because he's an every-meaning person. He says, what we do not understand about the budget is how the IDA give out a baked list in the form of pile-up programs. Those are large numbers. And I cannot find how the contributions to schools are counted in the budget. You want to make a comment on that?
Yeah, so the mayor just recently released this exact budget a couple of days ago. I just started going through it, 150 pages. You know, one of the interesting things in this current budget is that the Rockefeller Institute recently did an analysis of the formula that's used by the state to have a front schools. And I think they came out and said that the city of Yonkers, for our size district and our jurisdiction, the state formula comes out to around $60 million. I think that's the correct number. And we don't get anywhere near that $60 million. So one of the jobs, or my responsibility as city council president, would be to make sure that, especially when you have an mouse and a video like that, that advocate for the state to deliver that money to our behalf. And to make sure that state delegation is going up there and is also fighting the responsibility that has to us as well. You know, something you mentioned is about IDAs and pilots. I don't know if IDAs and pilots are specifically detailed in the executive budget itself. I believe that they would be in a different body of documents. But having said that, just to squeeze in that idea entirely, I think any development in the city that increases our tax cuts and improves housing, quality of life for our residents and to benefit, as long as it's done smart and as long as it's done lawfully and we take into account how it's going to impact our communities, our assets. You look around, there's a ton of development goals from waterfront goals to waste, to waste track, to the water. As long as we're doing it the right way, we're doing it smart. It's how we're going to continue to grow, it's how we're going to continue to thrive, and it's how we're going to continue to increase our tax cuts. So I would say, we continue down the path of growth and development smartly and focusing on our communities.
A few days ago, you released a statement on your page that talks about the budget, the late budget that Governor John Hope released. Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so we're required to chart and to root block to release our budget. Of course, the state doesn't abide by their own rules and have to release the budget themselves, right? So it's very difficult for a municipal administration to formulate their own budget and determine allocation of resources without hearing from the state first. So if the state's late, then we have to make certain assumptions and then we have to go back. Now, we adjust, it's not the state's budget, now we have to readjust those assumptions. It's about, again, it's about doing the right thing, right? People get elected to office, and like you said before, promises are always remaining. But the hard part is keeping the promises, right? And if you're elected to office and you're on the state level, right? Yeah, one of the things you're supposed to do, you're supposed to pass a budget on time because our people can tell you, right? You're supposed to pass laws that keep our community safe, focus on victims and not on perverters, right? You're supposed to pass zoning conditions that keep our neighborhoods and our communities intact and protected. We can go through the entire witness of the different things the state does that I feel give it that different or tell better. But the focus is Yonkers, of course, the city council of Yonkers. And that's why, going back to what we were saying before, I think it is important to have a Republican elected to this office because somebody who's not in a struggle with the Democratic line offers some sort of challenge to be unreasonable and the unreasonable messaging about what goes down the state.
You also mentioned on your statement about the governor and Senator Andreas with cousins holding to criminals.
Yes.
I know that there is a state level, but those laws affect the local policy. So you wanted to elaborate on that so people can understand exactly what you mean and exactly what your objections are.
Yeah, I mean, so the main criminal justice reforms of the last couple of years that affect us, that impacts our communities directly were the bail reform, the change to bail reform, the changes to discovery, the changes to rates of service, the age. And again, these can get become complicated and ridiculous topics. But just to give you an anecdote for bail reform, there's a lot of people talking about that. So with bail reform, the argument is that just because somebody can't afford bail, they should be held in prison. And if somebody who's wealthy and can afford bail can wait for the court to end. And I don't disagree with that. I understand constantly, I agree with constantly. However, the nuance behind this is that bail was often used as a tool to keep dangerous and violent criminals injured because the courts are often so backed up and there's not enough judges and prosecutions that will go on time that there was no way, that there was no other good way to keep violent offenders or criminal recidivists out of our community. So bail was used as a tool to say, okay, you are likely, I let you go today, you're likely to go break into a crime scene today. So we're going to put this type of bail on you because we want to prevent that behavior. Now, on one hand, you can make the correct argument that, yes, that's unfair because you can't afford it or somebody could and there's an inherent fairness in that. Fine, I agree with that. But if you're gonna do that, then you have to give the force. You have to give the means, the tool to say, okay, we're gonna remove finances out of the equation. But what do you do with somebody who's just a bad person? And we know he's gonna go out and he's gonna break into a crime scene. Or we know he's going to go out, he's going to do harm to the community, right? So when these laws were only the first passed, you know, you kind of fixed one issue on the economic scale, but it didn't address the other one. And that's kind of going back to what I was talking about, dangerousness, right? So I think the state legislature took a slightly different approach to this. And the approach, if you had asked me, or I'm sure if you had asked the police technicians or the A, if you ever said, let the judges decide, okay? We're not going to use bail, but let's not sweep the pendulum so far in the other direction now that, you know, somebody can go out and commit crimes twenty times before they have to go to jail. So that's one example of how that was implemented, right? You know, the discovery laws, and I believe there's work being done in this now to actually change this. But when the discovery laws were first changed, you had to have all material presented to the defense within fifteen days. Now, if anyone's ever been a part of any sort of police investigation or any sort of major event in their life, it takes a lot longer than fifteen days to collect all the material. You know, like if you're talking about a major incident on the street, right? It might take you three weeks just to get all the samples, maybe from the Stratton area. It might take you another three weeks to review it, right? It might take you a month to identify all the different witnesses and get all your statements and to collect all imported material as part of the investigation. So a good investigation takes a very long time, you know, because you've enjoyed this work for a very long time. So to tell, you know, to tell the police department now, no, 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 we don't care. We need to have everything within fifteen days. You know, you're off, it's an unreasonable burden.
There was a kind of a meeting, and this has been going on all over the state, not just in Yonkers, but also in Yonkers in regards to the continuing various product executives coming up in Yonkers.
Yes.
Some people, some people said, yeah, doesn't matter as long as safety measures are in place. What is your position on that?
I am on my toes with the neighborhoods, right? The neighborhood, bottom line is, nobody wants this in the backyard. So I need to become more educated on specifics of the developer request to the topic. But my initial impression is, I wouldn't want it next to my house, therefore, I wouldn't ask one of my communities or neighbors to put it next to their house.
It's going to be in the back of somebody's?
It's going to be in the back of somebody's house, yeah. And that, going back to what we're talking about, the smart development. Can we identify a location or a place where we can place this and not have it impact our communities and our incomes, right? And that's the question, and that's the work, and that has to get done. And so in that specific example, that's something that I need to educate myself on as well. But my priority is towards the residents who live there. Because at the end of the day, right, we can talk about these big issues that affect everyone, right? And I think philosophically, this is where you'll find a little bit of the difference between Democrats and Republicans, right? Because only as Republicans. I think Democrats often make decisions based on ideology and, you know, emotion. Let's say ideology, where Republicans are a little bit more practical, and they look at things from a more realistic perspective, right? And when it comes to something like that, I think you'll often find lots of times, you know, Republicans will, you know, focus more on how the, you know, how I affected today. You know, where the Democrats are thinking more about, you know, what is my architecture, right? And I am on my toes for legalization and people like that. You know, like the legalization, there are a lot of places. And I understand the nuances, you know, behind why the state wanted to do it. You know, about reducing taxes, you know, increasing tax dollars, and reducing stimulus, suppressing labor, we really need to solve that. But nobody can tell me they enjoyed going home again, it smelled, or very few people. I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't, you know what I mean? And especially when you come into our more densely populated areas down here, and we've got, you know, grandmothers and grandfathers walking home with the trucks doing it. And now, you know, it just hits your face. To me, that's a quality of life issue, that's not a good thing, a worthy. You know, I would have liked to have seen something different in that. I mean, they're all a minority, that's what I feel, obviously, obviously, in Las Vegas. You know, during, you know, during COVID, during those years, you know, we, as a society, we weren't telling people to wear their masks in the social business, but at the same time, we were also very hands-off with a lot of chaos on the streets. And I don't know, I feel it should be the other way around, right? I feel our focus should be, you know, on people who are living here and whose lives are daily impacted by the decisions from here. Not the ones who's allowed it, or who's got the most followers on social media, but the people who are living in our neighborhoods, living in our communities, are we doing the right thing?
Now, let's come down again to issues that are affecting Yonkers very deeply.
Yes.
Very deeply. Homelessness, especially in this area. I don't know other areas if you see as much homelessness as you see in Yonkers. But homelessness is a serious problem. We all are looking for a solution, but no one wants the homeless.
You know, it's yards. Yep. It is a difficult, it is a complicated situation, because I do believe everybody wants to go back here. You can solve homelessness tomorrow if you want it to. You can pass a city ordinance, or you can pass a state law saying that's against the law on the streets, right? Obviously, we don't want to do that because it's not the passion we can do. But here's the connection. Our homeless population is almost never looking after themselves, people with mental health issues. You've seen it, I've seen it, anyone who's been, you know, who's had one or two interactions with a lot of homeless populations, see it too. Like, if you're someone who's just down in your life or financially near happening, there are a lot of services, and there's a lot of opportunity out there to get some sort of support or benefits, so you don't have to live on the street. Our homeless population often don't access those services, right? They almost choose to live on the street, or they don't know any better, or probably because they have mental health issues. And this is just to be a fireproofing. I know you in the past, you've fed, you brought things to homeless, you've acted, you've spoken to them. You've probably interacted with same people multiple times. I know in the outskirts, for example, we had, I think you had that task force, you know, comprised of police and social services that go out and connect the homeless population. We're trying to bring them in, get them to give the services. And I remember reading some of the statistics. Sometimes you've had a hundred and fifty, two hundred contacts with the same person, trying to convince them to, you know, to pump the services that they need to come in. And they even refuse, they'll monitor a building once and they cut that gap, right? So to me, the answer is, is that you have to be compassionate with our homeless population or mental health population. And sometimes that means that you have to be compassionate and making sure they get the services they need, even if they don't want it. And if that means sometimes that, you know, it's against their, you know, against their choice, like whether it's taking them to the hospital or it's cold out, or making sure, you know, that if they're fine, that they're in a support facility, getting the medication they need. I, to me, that is the more compassionate thing to do, right? And I know a lot of people don't agree with that because they don't want to, they don't want to see or hear about forcing somebody to do something that against their will. But to me, I'm looking at it the other way. As a society, isn't compassionant to meet these people out there at least? I mean, how many times can you walk past the same person, you know, who's obviously in crisis, who's obviously had, you know, mental health issues? And just be like, oh, well, you know, it just be more, you know, or we need more housing, or we need, you know? But we've seen that that's not a reasonable answer. Because we've seen communities, we've seen governments all over the country. Throw a moniker at the show, and it doesn't necessarily solve the problem. Because the problem at its core is, what do you do with somebody who needs help but doesn't want it, right? And the compassionate answer to me is, you almost have to force them on.
I'm going to bring up something that you were involved in, I was involved in. And you gave me an answer when I called up an inquiry box that appeared with Mr. West. North of, I received a call, safety type of folks, people self-indulgent. The men on eighty-nine floor, putting a board off his balcony, sleeping on the balcony.
I remember that.
You remember that?
Yeah, we went and investigated.
That's correct. You went to investigate, you removed the visual from the building, took him to the hospital. An hour later, I received a call from the lady saying, he's back here. I called you, you said, "room?" All that we can do is investigate and do whatever we need to do, that will keep them on to make sure that everyone is safe. What happens next is not up to the post, that's right. You want to address this because, look, mental illness, it's a serious. And I have covered many instances, people who live in suicide, people sending themselves on fire, jumping from overpasses that where the police actually wanted to wait at the stadium to then on Park of Hope. I don't know if you remember that day. Wait, that at the last minute, minute that the person was jumping, one of the officers pulled the bridge.
Pulled the bridge, yeah.
Yeah. Unbelievable. But you are not, that is not part of your job, to give truth to this, or resolve the problem, or be proactive. You want to address that because as the city council president, he's elected, he has issues, right?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And it is, you know, it is an issue much bigger than the city of Yonkers, or Yonkers City Council, or, you know, even a county. And going back to what I was saying before, that person is a perfect example. Why did the hospital collect an app after a hour, right? Why wasn't he helped? Right now, and again, it's made a change. Right now, I believe hospitals are allowed to provide something for up to seventeen hours if they feel that he's in mental health crisis and needs the medication, right? Now, years ago, many many years ago, you know, we did used to have special hospitals. I don't even call institutions because that word has a bad connotation to it. But we had special hospitals where you can, you know, it can, you know, hold people for longer periods of times, you know, if they were constantly in crisis. Now, those institutions, those hospitals did a very bad job, and they were rightfully closed down because they were not providing the level of service and the level of care they should, right? And the solution was to allow, you know, a lot of these folks to live in our communities and to access community-based mental health resources. And for nine out of ten people, it works and it's a great system. What we're talking about is the very, very small subset. I don't know, if you were to say how many homeless people are in Yonkers, legitimately, what is it, a hundred, a hundred and fifty? Right, it's a very small subset of the population that are just, we'll call them recidivist homeless or recidivist mental health, right? Those folks need the most services, and we need to make sure that we're a compassionate society and we're giving them those services whether they want it or not. Because what the downside is, is that if we don't do that, are you going to get a break where there's a random stabbing? Are you going to get a mental school break where they're pushing something forward or something? Where they're running into traffic or something like that, right? And so, and we've seen those examples in the city, not that we're proud of it, we've seen those examples here in Yonkers and that. But if it were to happen tomorrow, we should be surprised. You know, so that very small subset of the population that needs the services the most, we should give it to them. And if that means having to change the laws where we have to, you know, put them in a place or put them in a facility to make sure they get the services they need, then I would be willing to explore that. Because what I do know is what we have now, the system we have right now, is not working. And if you need any better example of that, just, you know, look at the New York Post, and you should read the book News in New York City, and you can see any number of examples of mentally ill people doing all the things.
Well, Lieutenant, we want to have to come home sooner or later. But before we go, there is one thing that I mean, asking, that I did not mention, that which is housing.
Yes.
Housing, rents are going up, unbelievable. Many people that want to live are intent on losing their apartment because the renewal is bringing the rent up. Yep, to a point that is just unacceptable to many people. Generations that are living in Yonkers for many, many years are now forced to move out if they cannot longer afford the housing. How would you intend to address this issue?
So take the issue of blood, for example, right? I believe it was originally part of a HUD or HRT. You know, whether it was a direct monetization or, you know, whether it was reduced correctly because of HUD. You know, that has expired, and we need to land it, which will help to reset the bill's market rates. But then I sympathize with the tenants. I want to help them as best as possible. But at the same time, I'm also cognizant of the fact that you have to, you have to incentivize development and progress in the city to continue growth. Because if these developers are losing money, and I'm not saying that's the case of a company, but I'm saying if these developers are starting to lose money, then they're not going to motivate the populace, they're not going to invest in resources and facilities, and they're not going to make things better. There has to be a middle ground, right? There has to be a middle ground between, you know, protecting our residents and making sure that housing is affordable, right? And whether that's designated a certain percentage of parties to be, you know, affordable housing or not housing. But at the same time, we need to, we need to respect property rights, and we need to, we need to allow people to develop and grow. Otherwise, what happens is we become stagnant. And then, you know, there's any number of towns that are not conservative and not remain, who have to have no growth and they're in financial trouble, right? So you have to find a middle ground between taking both the tenants and also respecting property rights. So it's a very complicated issue, and it's one that the parties will want to establish.
More than anything else. Now, Lieutenant, running campaign, political campaigns are pretty expensive.
Yes.
They are. People that are watching, people that want to donate to your campaign, people that want to talk to you, you want to tell them how to do that?
Absolutely. So what I'm going to do is, once this is over, I'm actually going to post my cellphone number in the comments. Anyone can call me, just text me anytime, right? But if I don't answer, I'll point back. We are having a fundraiser on May seventh at La Antena, the La Antena Restaurant. And I'll be perfectly honest with you, Ben, this is the part of running for office I don't really like. It is expensive running a campaign, it's expensive, you know, doing mailers and doing all the print things. You know, and asking people for support, especially financial support, it is very humbling. And it really, it really also opens my eyes to all the people that have supported me when it's financial or political, carry petitions. It is very humble, right? It really, it really changes your perspective on things. And it also makes me realize too that I have a responsibility now greater than myself to make sure that I do the right thing and I support those who support me. So I'll post my number and the website, it's the Yonkers, that's okay?
Yes, yes. On Instagram or Facebook?
I believe it's both.
Oh, yeah, it's both Instagram and Facebook.
We also have a website, and we'll post, we'll post all that stuff, I'll post with the comments. And again, we were, we had a fundraiser on the set.
And if somebody wants to volunteer?
Absolutely.
That's the same place?
Yes, it's going to be chucked in a hundred percent.
Did I forget to ask the main thing that can get you on the link?
Did you forget to ask me? No, I did this. Unless we have more questions?
No, we basically, let me see. Phil Armstrong, Yonkers does not need dance, Democrats or Republicans, but politicians that work for the reference of Yonkers today, and not those that expect to live here in the future.
I agree, one hundred percent.
I agree. So you're not going to be, let me guess, if, see if I could. You're not going to be a Republican council president if you are elected. You wouldn't be a council president for the city of Yonkers.
To be honest with you, Ben, and to be honest with Phil, I would much rather hand the city a resume and all the residents my resume and say, you know, go before a hiring board and say, here, you know, this is why I think I'm good for the job. Having said that, I, you know, it's obviously, it's a political process to elect an office. I do believe in Republican and conservative principles, but I'm not here to only work for Republicans and Conservatives. I'm here to work for all of us in the city and all the people in the remaining as our communities. And I'm doing that as a Republican, as a Conservative, as a softening. I believe that Republican, Conservative principles are what's going to guide our cities towards success and the best in life. But that's not just Republicans.
Guys, Yonkers voice does not represent you. We do not speak on your behalf. This is not about my voice, this is a platform where your voice is heard, where you can engage directly with those that are elected to represent us. This is the place where you can, this is the breach. Last, they were blocked. I just made the platform available to all that want to come and see. Thank you for watching, Lieutenant. Thank you for taking the time, I appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you for having me.
And I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.